I see it. I see it. I see it. Okay.
That was too much.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone. All right. Dr. Rum Carter, are we ready?
We are ready, Dr. Anderson.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I bring greetings from the Clayton County Board of Education. And I want to greet and welcome our community out tonight, our employees, our students, our parents, and any public officials that we have that are joining us tonight. I want to thank you guys for coming out. My name is Dr. Alika Anderson, and I serve as the Vice Chair for the Clayton County Board of Education, and I bring greetings from the Clayton County Board of Education tonight. First of all, I hope everyone is staying safe. And I would like to take this time to pay my condolences. Everyone, I would like to make my condolences out to one of our teachers from Riverdale Middle School, Mr. Mark Suddles, who passed away on yesterday. As we know that we are going through a lot of unprecedented times right now, and we know that it is going to be light at the end of this tunnel. So tonight, I want to thank everyone for coming out to support our newest board member, Dr. Deatress D. Haney. Dr. Haney is no stranger to our community. She is consistently out there. She has served as the Chairwoman of the Clayton County CASA, and she advocates for our children to make sure that they are not, or she, and they, not just our children, but to make sure that our kids are not being neglected and abused. We welcome her with open arms to our board. And again, we thank everyone for coming out tonight for her meet and greet. And please enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. And let's see.
Thank you.
After Dr. Anderson, we will have Dr. Morcise Beasley, and I believe there's an echo.
Yeah, you sound like you are trying to leave the atmosphere. Can you all hear me? Okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Good. Well, hello. Hello, everyone. We are just so pleased to introduce and welcome, of course, our newest board member who has already hit the ground running, and you probably feel like it's been two years, huh? Dr. Haney, we're so glad to have you. And so we just want you to know, as the superintendent, I look forward to working with you. We have been working together and just look forward to working with you and the other members of the board as we move our school system forward. We know it's a lot of work to do, but I believe we're all here for a time as this, and we're going to do what it takes to continue to move to higher levels of performance in our school system. So we just want to welcome you. We want to greet you. We want you to know that we're here to support you as you support your constituents, as you support the 55,000 children in our county, all the parents, and all, really, the community. Because we know that as the educational system goes in a district, so goes the district. And so we recognize that you are on the board to help move this school district forward. So welcome again. We're glad to have you, glad to be working with you, and excited, excited about your tenure on the board. Our goal is to make you a very proud board member, along with the other eight board members. So again, thank you, and we look forward again to working with you and supporting our community. And it's always good to see our board chair and vice chair as we move this district forward. And I also see some other board members there that are on the event. So again, good to see all of you and welcome, Dr. Haney. Glad to have you and enjoy this event as you connect with our community.
Thank you, Dr. Beasley. And we will have State Representative Ronda Berno, Clayton County Chairman Jeff Turner, Commissioner Sauna Gregory, District One, and also our president and CEO of Clayton Chamber, Ms. Valencia Williams, and Clayton County Judge Stephen Teskey to join us. And so I do see you, Commissioner Gregory, and then Ms. Valencia Williams, and then Judge Stephen Teskey. Representative Berno and Chairman Turner is joining us shortly.
Good evening. Would you like me to go ahead, Dr. Carter?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm really happy to bring greetings this evening as the Vice Chair of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners for the 2021 year. Dr. Haney, I know this is not something you took on lightly to enter the world of public service. I know it's just not a call you woke up and decided you were going to do. I'm sure you can make a lot more money somewhere else. But it's when you care about people and you want to see the right thing done, you just go after it. And again, your job, because you've got the responsibility of over 55,000 of our most precious commodities in this county. So you have a great job. We are going to be there for you. We got your back. We got a lot of women in office in this county, and we're going to have your back. We're going to be there to support you. I congratulate you. I welcome you, and I thank you for taking on this task. Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Haney, and to all of the other speakers here. I'm Valencia Williamson, President and CEO of Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. And I bring you greetings on behalf of our membership and our Board of Directors. Congratulations on being a part of the Clayton County Board of Education. We are so proud of you and also of your accomplishments, and to have you serve as part of our membership for so many years. So this is not new to you, as Commissioner Gregory just said. You've been in public service for many years, and you are passionate about our county and our children and moving us forward, which is exactly what the Chamber of Commerce is all about. We want to move the needle, and we cannot do that without a strong school district. So I know the work of Dr. Morcise Beasley and the district and school and all of the faculty and staff, it takes a village. And the Chamber of Commerce is here to support you every step of the way. So again, congratulations. I'm so happy to be a part of this tonight and look forward to hearing from everyone else. So thank you.
Thank you. Judge Teskey?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the invitation to make some brief comments. And I want to congratulate Dee and welcome her as well to this school board. And I want to comment on that because, you know, one of the strongest partnerships and the strongest partner in any community matter in which you're seeking to improve economic mobility, reduce crime, is your school system. No doubt about it. And Dr. Beasley made reference to that. I've taken the research and I summed it up with this, how go graduation rates, so go crime rates. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that what the school board has done in terms of its leadership and through the years, supporting its superintendents, including Dr. Beasley, and doing the boots-to-the-ground managing and executing your policies, has no doubt led, because of the leadership of this school board, to the increase in graduation rates every year for many years. Okay? And let me tell you how we know what this means in terms of, well, for Ms. Williamson particularly, heading up the Chamber of Commerce and her, the importance of the economy to her in this county. But since the graduation rates have been going up, the number of delinquent filings in the court are down 80%. And 64% of that decrease represents felony filings, the more serious crimes. That means there's 64% fewer victims in this county at the hands of juveniles. And the credit goes to the school system. It goes to the school system, to the work that you all do. And that's why I'm so happy to see Dee joining you all, because I've been able to witness Dee for many years. You know, working with kids, supporting kids, holding their hands, hugging them at the juvenile court in their homes, you know, as the president of the Friends of CASA, supporting, you know, our CASA, our court-appointed special advocates who are the voice for children, you know? And Dee, you've just done a magnificent job in your leadership at the juvenile court. I appreciate you so much and all that you do. And I just can't think, you know, of anyone better to join such a fine group of folks at the school board and this superintendent. And I'm very proud of you, as I am the school board. Thank you for all that you all done.
Thank you.
And thanks to the commissioners, too, okay? Because they give me the money to help make that stuff work over there, and I appreciate it, Ms. Gregory, okay?
Thank you so much, Judge Teskey. Next, we will have Chairman Turner.
Okay, good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? I'm sure everybody's fine. I hope everybody's been safe and keeping the hope and faith alive. So, Ms. Dee, I mean, number one, I hate to have to follow Judge Teskey. Because usually, he has always, he's always said everything already. So when it comes to Clayton County, when it comes to the school system, everybody knows that economic development and the growth of a county follows the school system. So that's why it is so imperative and important for the school system to be doing well. And I apologize for not being on video because I am actually driving, but I felt that it was that important for me to be on this call to let you know how much I personally and professionally support Dee Haney and all that she is going to do for not only the school system, but continue to do for Clayton County as a whole. So Dee, I'm proud of you. I am glad to see that you are doing these town hall meetings that you are talking about pertinent and important issues that impact Clayton County and being transparent in all that you do. Because we could not do what we do as elected officials if, number one, we were not transparent. Number two, if we did not decide to serve for that very reason, to be servants to the citizens and not the other way around. And you have a heart of gold. I've been working with you for many years, like Judge Teskey said. Hey, through your work with CASA and so many other organizations, the entities, every time I turn around, if I'm there, you have been there as well. So I always thank you for this.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, and thank, potentially, going to be some great things that's happening with the school system in addition to what's already happening. I'm very proud of our school system. Make no qualms about it. Our school system is moving up. We're doing a whole lot better. And when you talk about going back to the economic development piece, the crime stats is one thing, but people will not move to that community if their kids cannot receive a quality education. So that's why it's so important for us to have a quality school system. And I think we're well on the way of doing that and with the leadership we have in place. And Dee is just another gem that we're going to be able to capitalize on as we continue to move Clayton County forward. So I don't want to speak long, but I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that I personally am 101%, in support of Ms. Haney and the works that she is ordained by God to do, because she wouldn't be in that position if he didn't.
That's right. That's right.
So thank you for all that you do and all that you will do. Thank everybody else on this call that is going here in support of her, and not only her, but the school system, our superintendent, and most definitely the 55,000 students in our school system. Great things are on the horizon, people. So stay tuned and be blessed and God bless.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Turner. State Representative Ronda Berno just texted me, of course, they are having their legislative meeting, and she was trying to get on to bring her greetings right before then, but was unable to, but she wants you to know that she is very much in support of you. She's very proud that you have, and proud that you have received this position, and anything she can do to help, she will be glad to do. Okay, thank you so much, all that have brought greetings, Judge Teskey, Commissioner Sauna Gregory, Valencia, and, let's see, Judge Teskey, thank you all so much. Valencia, you know, she's, that Dr. Haney is a member of the, well, a graduate alumni of the Leadership Clayton, not the best class ever, of course, because that was my class, but yeah, she did it.
I didn't mention that, but yes, ma'am, I knew that. And I'm telling you, Leadership Clayton is a great way to get started in serving the community. So thank you for that as well. Thank you for that plug.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, we will have our, let's see, now we will have the vision from Dr. Deatress Haney.
Thank you, Chairman. You can slide up to that slide, Chan. Hello, everyone. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for taking out time to just pop in on Zoom to listen to me. This has been a great honor to be able to be in this capacity, to be able to serve not only my community, but District Five. And so I want to thank District Five, first and foremost, for voting me in to serve you all, as we all say, we are servants, and servants have humility about themselves and should have humility about themselves. Because it's not about us, it's about us developing our community and moving our community in a new direction with fresh ideas and being able to respect each other's differences as well as embrace the differences and knowing that we have a common goal. And this common goal, of course, is our students. And so I just want to just, first and foremost, give thanks to you all, as well as my community, as well as my board constituents, as well as Dr. Beasley and all community leaders. And so I just want to just give time out to say, again, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Battle. I appreciate that, and I'll try to acknowledge you as I look back and forth. But here it is, my vision here, and this is really what I do anyway, you know? But you know, as you run for office, you have to have the ultimate platform. But at any rate, one of them is the community involvement in our school system. As I was listening to Dr. Wiley on the call that was on with our students in our community about the strategic planning, a lot of our community was out there, as well as our parents. And so just as Ms. Guarrie had mentioned, as well as others, it's about the community. And so I want us to be able to, as I come out here, because not only as a board member, but I am a citizen of Clayton, and I'm very proud of that, to build those partnerships from local business owners and to develop and provide apprenticeships and those internship opportunities for our students. And I'll get more into that because you'll see where I'm going with that. And I know that Ms. Harrison had said on the call as well, previous, that every student track is not always academic. And so we want to get them into some spaces where they're comfortable with their education, their career goals kind of line to what we have in place here as a district through our pathways program, as well as our dual enrollment programs. And I'm so proud of those programs, so I'm going to keep talking about those. And secondly, establish the equity in our school system, and that's to ensure continuous retention of our talented teachers and paraprofessionals in what we consider challenging schools to improve professional development and incentives. And so Dr. Jamie Wilson and his staff in HR, they're doing a great job as to ensuring that we do hire those staff members, teachers, as well as retaining those teachers. And so we're remaining pretty competitive in what we're doing. Are we going to get it right all the time? No. Are we going to get it wrong sometimes? Yes, but we're working in strides to ensure that we're pretty much on the competitive edge of retaining our teachers for our students. And so along with that, of course, improve the accountability in our school system, and that's to establish those benchmarks for community assessment of progress. So it's all about how the community assesses us. I mean, because how can we know where to grow if we don't get assessed? I mean, we all go through performance reviews at our jobs or whatever it may be to know who we are. So we have those opportunities to improve. Those are areas that we can capitalize on in conjunction and concert with our superintendent, who gives us that information, and in concert with our board, how we can collaborate, to come together and say, these are some areas that we need to address that the community has voiced. And so lastly, the collaborative support from our local state legislation. I'm in our school system, as you know, our Chairwoman, Representative Berno, was on another call with delegation as we speak. And so, but this has always been something of mine that I really stay true to. As I spoke earlier, every student is not ready for college. Every student is not ready for the four-year track, or maybe perhaps they want the two-year track. And so I speak from experience from that, because coming out of high school many, many months ago, you know, I was like, thought I was ready, but in actual reality, I wasn't. So I took incremental steps to get to the next level. And luckily, there were some plans in place for me to get there, so I'll know the path that I wanted to go in to be successful in what I'm doing. And so I want to work to secure that funding, because you know, we were cut, some fundings were cut last year, the budget statewide with that House Bill 444. So we, you know, we're trying to recoup that, and I'll get into that more, too, but to work to secure that funding for career technical and agricultural education and technology programs. And so this is some of the visions that I want to move forward with, and just to give you a little background on that, but I really just want to, and I'll address the questions because some of the questions did come as a result of my visions. And so I just want to just give kudos to our various departments within the districts, such as our CTAE program. And so being able to work in conjunction with that, but I'll get more into that. And so now here, thank you, Dr. Chan, you'll see the schools that I serve, which is, you'll see all the schools here. I know we did have a question if I served one school. And so these are the schools that I serve as, and some of our schools do overlap with other board members, and like I said, we work together. And so regardless of, and this is District Five, I primarily do facilitate, as I would like to say, a community buy-in of all these schools here within the District Five area. But feel free to contact any of our board members. It's not just about Dee Haney saying District Five is my district. No, it's a community effort and all board members. We are all accessible to whatever district we're in, from our Vice Chair, Dr. Anderson, she will address you with any, you know, concerns that you have, as well as our Chair, Ms. Guarrie, as well as all other board members. And so here, I just wanted to highlight some of our District Fives. Yes, we do have some District Fives going on. We've got some highlights out here. And so Kendrick Middle School, and those who may have students at Kendrick, here we go, were recognized as a National Beta Club School of Distinction. And so we should be very proud of that. So these are some of our highlights. Lee Street and Jonesboro Middle School are both candidates for the International Baccalaureate Program. As well as Sequoia Middle, they're selected as an official site for the Girls Empowering Movement Program. And your school, which is Sequoia, stood out among many of the qualified applicants, and it's one of 49 schools selected for the program in the state of Georgia. And so also over at Mount Zion High School, the teacher, Ms. Andrea Price, received a $1,000 grant as recipient of a Nobel Education Teacher of the Year finalist award from the National Society of High School Scholars. And this is the highest graduation rate, let's repeat that, highest graduation rate among traditional schools and districts at 87.9. So we have a lot to be proud about, and it's up to us to change the narrative on how we look at our school system, how we look at our district. It's our responsibility, as well as the board, but it's our responsibility as a community to change the narrative, to change it from what they used to talk about, about what we're doing now. And so as one has already said, like Ms. Williamson has said, it's time to move the needle, and we are doing that. And of course, it takes incremental steps, but it also takes all of us to do so. And so that's what I wanted to bring to you all, and just let you know that I'm here for you. So whatever, you can just contact me and just let me know what your concerns are. And like I said, if I don't know, I will seek out an answer to find out for you, along with my fellow board constituents as well. So Chan, I'm not sure you have the next slide?
Yes, Ms. Jessica Ree, for our board chair, will talk about the role and responsibilities of the school board.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for joining us. I'm waiting for her to put the slide up, and I'm going to tease Judge Teskey, because I usually tease him about having to shake my keys, but he was very good in the greetings. Actually, Chairman Turner was the one that needed the key shaking this evening. Thank you, Judge Teskey. Anyway, what does school boards do exactly? We have a slide here that I am not going to read to you, just pretty much, we have these four dimensions here. We plan, legislate, evaluate, and we empower our staff to carry out policies. But I want everyone to know that, of course, as far as we keep mentioning these 55,000 students that we deal with, we have the board, only has one employee, that would be Dr. Morcise Beasley. So we hold him accountable for all of these great things that are going on in the school district. And as Dr. Haney just said, we were just in a strategic planning meeting. So we just left that meeting, and we like that, of course, in order for us to be successful, we do need to be listening to what our public has to say. We have constituents, and as Dr. Haney has learned, that you can look at all of these nice things on paper about what we're supposed to do. First and foremost, we need to be, our primary concern is student achievement, but we are policymakers. We also sometimes serve as a tribunal in personnel matters and with our students. And we, one of our very important duties is to be a good steward of our And we, one of our very important duties is to be a, a good steward of our money. So we have to have a balanced budget. But as anyone that is an elected official knows, that this is not a nine-to-five job. And Ms. Haney has said that she has, has seen this, the email. We, the board members end up on the ballot as the last person that someone votes for. But we are really and truly the most important elected officials, as I see it, because we are in charge of your students. Your children, parents that are listening. And so sometimes as a board member, you think that you're just going to go out and go to Kroger and, um, buy some groceries. And then somebody recognizes, oh, aren't you Dr. Haney or aren't you, um, Ms. Goree, Dr. Anderson, and, uh, other board member, Victoria Williams is here. And you think you're just going to get those few little items and end up in your car, but you find yourself standing there. Uh, uh, you know, for thirty minutes hearing about either all the bad things or hearing all the good things that have happened. And I just want to tell a little story because even as the way that I met Dr. Haney. Uh, I, we, we were at a luncheon, at a, the one hundred, uh, Black Women Luncheon, I believe. And it just so happened that, um, I didn't know where I was supposed to sit at. Someone said, go over there and sit at that seat. And we started talking and then she started telling me that she lived in Clayton County and she was all involved with CASA and all this type of stuff. And I was like, well, man, she would be a good, uh, board member, somebody to look at in the future after, um, Ms. Burrows left. So you just never know. So I started talking to her about the school board and, you know, she just, as everyone has said here about Dr. Haney, she's very involved in the community and a perfect person to serve on the Clayton County Board of Education, especially with her work with CASA. And, you know, we have a great relationship with CASA and, and Judge Teske. So this is not a nine-to-five job. I can guarantee you, you're going to have at least uh, ten to twenty emails a day that you, from your constituents for things that are going on in the school district. And, uh, Dr. Anderson alluded to the fact that we, uh, lost one of our, um, employees today. And just as I've been sitting here, I'm getting text messages about that. And, you know, so we, we have things that happen every day. We, we are very involved with our students and with our staff. And of course, you know, we've mentioned condolences to his family, but that's what comes because we're dealing with human beings. And when you're dealing with human beings, it's, you know, you got to have the heart to, to be very caring. So that's also, uh, one of the roles and responsibilities, although it's not written that a school board member should have. But I'm going to stop here and I'm so glad to have Dr. Haney as, as one of my colleagues and a part of the team. And I thank my board members that are here on the call. And I'm going to turn it over. I guess it goes to Ms. Jada because I believe she's going to start the, the, uh, Q and A. So thank you all so much for, uh, letting us be a part of Dr. Haney's meet and greet.
Thank you, Ms. Goree, and good evening and welcome again to this special meet and greet event this evening featuring Dr. Haney. Uh, I'd first like to acknowledge the Clayton County Board of Education, our superintendent and CEO of schools who had to depart due to another meeting. All distinguished guests and our elected officials as well as Clayton County community. We thank you all for joining us live this evening. The purpose of tonight's virtual meeting has been established by our event host, Dr. Haney. And now I personally have the privilege of coordinating the question and answer portion of this meeting. As a reminder, in preparation for tonight's virtual meeting, an invitation was extended to all stakeholders to submit questions in advance that will be answered by Dr. Haney. I will now start the process of presenting and posing those questions to Dr. Haney. Dr. Haney, you should know about eight individuals indicated that they have no questions for you, only comments to wish you well and spend this evening to listen and learn more about you. And so the seven questions that I do have, I'll start now, first being with Angela Weeks. She wants to know what are some ideas and initiatives that you have for students in our rep-, in our representation area? I believe she obviously means in District Five.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks, for that question. And I did look at that. Um, let's just be honest, we are a Tier One county, right? And so we're in a Tier One school district, which means our county is considered the most economically disadvantaged. And with the lowest, um, job creation. And so I want to share what I've been doing so far as a board member since January. And I've been looking into this prior to, but now officially as a board member. Um, I've had meetings with the CTAE department and that's Ms. Shepherd, who's the director and her team. Um, to work in conjunction with, alongside with her to, um, give her some, basically connect the dots with individuals and, um, entities within our community. And as you know, the CTAE is our college technical agriculture education. And if you want to put another T on that, I mean, it's how the state looks at it, is technology. And so I've been talking with her and her team, um, being able to work alongside with her to ensure that our students have those jobs ready for them as they enter into the job world. And so having those conversations with her, um, along with the Clayton County Development Authority. I've had conversations with them over at, um, them, with Larry Vincent as well as Regina Deloche and Ms. Shepherd. Been able to have those conversations to move our students into a new space when they're either still in school or when they graduate, as they graduate and go into post-secondary. So those conversations have been most robust. Um, I think this goes into play, as I've mentioned before, um, my vision. Um, it's a collaboration to ensure that our students receive those apprenticeships and those internship opportunities. If we have a pathways program, then we're going to fully utilize the pathway programs to ensure that our students have those opportunities. And so it's not, um, so much on paper, but we're going to be about action. And so just to give, um, acknowledgements to Ms. Shepherd, and I want you all to reach out to her if you have those businesses that you know of. And along with our chamber, uh, with Ms. Valencia Williamson, get with them and let us know as board members, let Ms. Shepherd know. So that our students can be ready because if we're saying we want them to move into a new direction, we need everybody's buy-in. And so that's what I've been doing as of connecting the dots in that space there and to make sure that our students are not considered because they come from a tier one, we're more than that here. And so we have to, like I said before, we have to change the narrative and our students have to feel good about that when they leave here. Because it's easy to say they want, we want them to live, work, and play here. But we have to be about the action as of making sure the resources are in place for them to do so. And so also you asked another part of the question. Um, I'm look, I'm looking into a youth development, uh, workforce and I've just had a conversation with, um, a young lady this morning, actually. And she's in the metro area. And so again, she wants to work in collaboration and I told her, I said, you need to come out to Clayton because we do have some gems out here in Clayton. And so her program is getting underway. And so of course, I'll connect the dots again, um, with the appropriate individuals protocol, of course. And to ensure that our students have another gateway for employment as well as more college and, um, opportunities along with what we have here as Clayton State. As well as a lot of technical and other schools as well. And that goes in conjunction again with our CTAE program, our pathways program, and our dual enrollment programs. So yeah, that's, I hope that answers your question. If not, just feel free to shoot me an email and I'll elaborate more.
Thank you, Dr. Haney.
Thank you.
And the next question comes from Catricia Page. She wants to know what can you do to change our district?
Well, um, I'm coming in to work in our district and work with our district and work with you all as a community. But, uh, one of the goals is to speak with our teachers and discuss ideas for recruitment and retention. And to, um, get in that space and just understand that, um, I think we need to have those, those conversations. But more so, I'm, I'm all about community. And like I said before, I was on a call before with the strategic planning, the community. We have to include everyone. It's not about, everything has to be so structured. Because the community is what makes this whole district, and that includes all of Clayton County move forward. As you hear that I'm involved with CASA, that involves the community because these are our children who are potentially abused and neglected. They need someone around them. So it takes the community to help move the district in a new area. Um, to change the district, to change the face, because it's no longer sitting on the sidelines waiting for the next district or the next person to do something. It takes all of us to do so. So that's what I want us to do is have those meetings with not only the staff, but also have meetings with the community. And these meetings would not just come once every blue moon. I plan to work in conjunction with our board coordinator to ensure that I have town hall meetings and include the partners such as our chamber. To include our, our, um, Chief Judge Teskes and all others to understand what goes on in our district that can help move our school district in a new direction as well as to work also in concert with that.
Thank you. And the next question is submitted by Rhonda Pittman. She wants to know, can there be an alternative to auditioning for magnet programs? Why do we have to audition?
Okay, and you're talking probably about the Pace School of the Arts, Ms. Pittman. Um, and I'll ask, um, Ms. Goree and Dr. Anderson too, because, um, though it's not directly in my district and because I'm new to that, I'll just, um, give what I do know as of research. Um, Pace School of the Arts is based on test scores. Um, the school is open to the entire school district and auditioning is just one part of getting into the school. And as of the alternative, there is an alternative school, such as Utopia, um, School of the Arts, but there's no audition required. Um, and Ms. Goree can speak on that as well, but at M.D. Roberts, I know that that's, that's an attendance zone. Me, because it's this in Jonesboro, um, anyone in that area, um, that lives in that area can attend. So Ms. Goree or Dr. Anderson, if you have any, you know, further dialogue on that, could you expound?
Yes, um, I just realized I wasn't on mute. I'm glad I wasn't here talking to myself like I usually do. Uh, anyway, as to what you said, uh, you must understand that we only have one performing school at each level. And it's open for all of the students in the county. So as she, as Dr. Haney said, the, uh, Kate Pace is the elementary school. So, uh, a part of the, uh, process is applying and, um, your test scores, test scores has, has something to do with it, uh, your academic scores. And there is an audition because it just depends, you know, when you're looking at a grade level. And let's say at first grade, you know, we're only letting in, uh, let's say a hundred kids. But you have three hundred kids that apply. So therefore, you know, there has to be a way to, to, uh, get that hundred in. So everybody's not going to get in. It's just like in anything in the, in the movie industry. You have to audition to get a part. That's the whole purpose behind that school. Now we, there is a elementary performing arts school. That's a charter school. That's a Utopian School of the Arts. But I believe that right now they only, uh, have kindergarten, first grade. I'm not sure if they have a fifth grade yet. They will be adding a grade next year. So there will be another alternative. At that school, they don't ask for auditions because they're a charter school. They're trying to build up on their enrollment. Now, and that school is under Clayton County Public Schools. That's an approved charter. But, uh, Utopian also has a middle school, but it's a state charter. That is not under Clayton County Public Schools. It's a state charter and you don't have to audition there. They will let you in. So you can al- always, you know, try that. It's within Clayton County. And we do support them because they have the, as I said, the elementary, uh, performing arts. And then again, the same thing for, uh, Stillwell. You know, we have a lot of kids that want to get into Stillwell. But, you know, auditioning is a part because you just can't, you know, you know, we, we, we have to see your talent because it's a performing arts school. We just don't let people in and you just, you know, you come in and you're just there for academics. It's a performing arts school. That's the purpose behind it. So, uh, but, you know, we also look at other things, you know, they don't, it, it's not always just, you know, the kid that has the best scores or whatever, you know, we have, it's a variety of students that are in those particular schools. We wish we could have more, but, you know, right now that's, that's what we have. And we're doing an excellent job uh, at those schools because we do know the, the correlation between the arts and academics, uh, helps us, uh, with, with achievement.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms., thank you all. Ms. Pamela Malone wants to know is Thurgood Marshall Elementary School within your district?
No, it's not. It's not in my district.
Okay, we'll follow the next question with Ms. Lori Redford. She wants to know what information do you have for Monday's Mill High School?
Oh, I know that. I was going to expound on that. Um, I know that we did have someone, um, at Monday's Mill as of a Girl Scout who's going to be receiving an award. That speaks to, I think, um, someone I know in Sabrina Hills area. Um, I know someone was, um, from the Girl Scouts and that, but I do know that's all the information I do have as of now. But as you've seen in the highlights, you've seen that Ms. Andrea Price received, um, the teacher award for that grant. So that represents, um, Monday's Mill High School. So that's a great accomplishment there. So I'll get more information. As I'm coming on board, I'm getting more information and researching all the schools that I serve.
I can, I can add about Monday's Mill. Monday's Mill is one of our schools that does have a magnet program. They have the movie and filmmaking program at Monday's Mill High School. Monday's Mill High School has had the very best, probably ROTC program within the, the district. Uh, the, uh, Dr. Haney alluded to the fact that they have a, a student, uh, Nisha Jackson. As a matter of fact, she sent me an email today about Girl Scout cookies. She is, uh, she has earned the high, highest honor, which is the gold award. She's also a cadet, uh, with the, uh, Monday's Mill ROTC. And she was, uh, I'm not sure if she's one posse, but I know she was one of the, made the, uh, semifinals for the Posse Scholarship. So, uh, we, you know, have some great things going on at, at Monday's Mill High School. So, uh, that's a, a great place to, to go to. And I wanted to add with that, sorry, about the, the movie making industry. If you go to Monday's Mill, now we talked about these colleges, you could, you can actually go to, I, I believe, I was getting ready to say Gordon, but I think it's Southern Crescent Technical School. And, uh, you can come out of there with a two-year program, our list, uh, making between seventy-eight and ninety thousand dollars without a four-year program. And you know that Georgia is the filmmaking capital of the world. So that's one of the great things that you could get at Monday's Mill High School.
And just to correct myself, that was Mount Zion that Ms. Price is at. But again, like Ms. Goree said, those accomplishments over at Monday's Mill, I might need to sign up for seventy thousand, yeah, eighty thousand. Yeah, continuing education. Okay.
Thank you both. Ms. Tisha Manuel wants to know your thoughts on classroom size and how they affect instruction, especially with the impact of COVID.
Ms. Manuel, that's a concern of all the board members, um, as well as the district as a whole. Um, just recently I was reading, um, where they're now making more changes. The CDC has just dropped some more information. Just recently I was reading on the Washington Post, um, where they're trying to now restructure that whole, how that looks now. They said if it was just that easy, everybody'd be back in school. But at any rate, how we're looking at it is dependent upon the class size, um, and the grade level. So we know the max is about thirty, um, but with COVID, like on buses or whatever it may be, it's fifteen. You have to look at school buses, twelve kids to a bus. It's a lot of moving parts with that. Um, so it's really upon the class size, um, that determines that. And of course, a grade level. And so we know that our high schools, of course, they want to get back in there. Some of them like a low reserve, like no, but at the same rate, we have to make sure that we keep the six, you know, the social distancing six feet apart. Um, so I just really believe that, uh, with that being said, it's dependent upon the class size. It's depending upon what CDC gives us because we have to follow what they say. And I know that we're looking at numbers, um, and we don't want to be too quick to try to put our students and our staff in jeopardy when we know that we have to, again, pull them back out. So that's just a lot of moving parts that we just trying to, you know, bring down before we even try to do anything moving forward. I'm not sure if Ms. Goree or Dr. Anderson have more information on that because as I said, we're still working through that part of that.
Ms. Haney, you are correct. We are still working through that part, um, as far as class sizes. We know that, um, we want to keep our class sizes small. And, um, and, um, as I've looked at other school districts, um, they, they're doing hybrid schedules. So you may have a, uh, a A day and a B day. And let's say for instance, if it's thirty kids in a class, some of the kids will come on Monday and Tuesday. Some of the kids will come on Wednesday and Thursday. So we are definitely looking at that. Um, our goal is to always keep our kids safe, especially what's going on with what's going on with COVID nineteen. And class size, we know we have class sizes that are not large, that teachers can really teach and really get with those children and make sure that they get the quality of education that they deserve. So, you know, one thing we want to do is keep our class sizes small. And we are going to continue to work through that. Again, we're going to look at those CDC guidelines. We're going to put in those hybrid schedules and we're going to make sure that our teachers and our students stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you both. And I'll present the last question, which comes from Ms. Ashley Phillips. She's a Girl Scout area executive and she wants to know how Girl Scouts She's a Girl Scout area executive and she wants to know how Girl Scout opportunities can be presented within, to the girls within your school district?
Hi, Ms. Phillips. And what you can do, um, is contact the principals, follow the protocol of the principal. Um, allow them that opportunity to be able to explore conversations with you and how to get into that and move into that space. And like you said, you heard Ms. Goree said that one of our very own, um, over at Monday's Mill is receiving the Gold Award. And so we are, we're very active with that and so we welcome that. But again, um, to follow the protocol and with respect to the principals, please consult with the principals of the desired schools that you're seeking to get that partnership with.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. That concludes the question and answer portion of this evening. And I'll turn it back over to you for your closing remarks.
Well, I just wanna say thank you so much again for the opportunity, District Five.
Did she freeze or am I the one that's?
You might be, you might be frozen, Ms. Goree. Well, I'll go on, but like I said, I just wanna say thank you, District Five, for allowing me to, um, be your board member. I am your board member, I'm accessible to you as well as all other districts. Um, we're just not inclusive just to ours, but we're inclusive to everybody, um, that serves within our, our district. And most importantly, that, that the importance of our students. But I did just wanna let you all know that I am appreciative of our chamber. Um, I was on the call with Clayton County Chamber of Commerce and we were on the, um, I said the Capitol Day, you know, so we had to do it virtually. And so I just wanted to give a little information to let you know about a couple of legislation, um, that's dropping down. Having conversations with our Lieutenant Governor Jeff Duncan. Um, it was just very enlightening to know that he has a strong interest in education. And so what really aroused me was his, um, concern and what he's trying to push a bill, though he does not legislate bills per se, he oversees the Senate. But to hear that he is strongly, um, in favor of our students who have special needs, um, receive scholarships, um, when they, um, graduate or just having that information, um, available to them. Um, and so that was really good to hear that, um, to ensure that they, um, receive the, the proper education they're supposed to have. And, you know, that's dear heart to me, our special needs children as well, because those are special gems. I don't like to say special needs, those are special gems in our district. And so we give attention to them. And so we, we do not exclude anyone in our district, does a great job with that. And our teachers in those spaces as well. So I was glad to hear that he's in support of, um, making sure that there are facilities in place and that there are programs and technology, um, for our special needs. Also, he mentioned, um, and which was a great thing to prior to rise foster care. And for parents who are, have foster care children or guardians, um, who are in charge of our foster care children, um, there's gonna be a bill that was passed for educational scholarships to technical schools. And so it's just good to hear how the trajectory is moving forward down at the Gold Dome, to hear him saying that and supportive of that. And so I'm getting more legislative on that as well. So again, like I said, they now recouping the money that we lost last year because of the budget, um, with House Bill four forty-four, I was paying attention to. And, but to hear him talk about that bill there and to hear how our foster care children will be taken care of. Because as you know, for those who are not familiar with that, our foster care children do comprise within our, in our county. Of course, they're not gonna know that. But we want to embrace them and ensure that they receive the quality education that they're deserving of as well. So that's what's going on, I was listening to that, um, what's going on at the Gold Dome. And I just wanna let you all know that I am aware of what's going on at the Gold Dome. I'm part of Georgia Voices, so I'm watching legislation that goes on, not only with education, but with juvenile justice as well, to ensure that our students, um, are receiving fair and equitable, um, education and justice. And so I just wanna let you know, I am your advocate, I am the children and students advocate. And I just wanna let you know that I'm here for you. And as you can see here, um, you can always stay in touch with me, um, through the website, through my phone number. That's listed, as well as my email address. And if you send me, let me just give this caveat, if you send me an email during the day, if you call me during the day, I prefer you to text me because I do work full-time. And I will let you know and say acknowledged, and that means that I have received it. And just give me time to get back with you. And I will get back with you. And like I said before, if I don't know the answer, then I'll get with my chair, as well as my vice chair, to just give me some guidance as to how you address. And perhaps they will too, they will probably address it as well. So I just wanna say thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Jada, for just being there and always supporting. And also sign up for, um, the information through her, her team, um, through Nikki. She can get you all the correspondence that goes on in Clayton County school system. Trust me, you will get an email. So please make sure you sign up to get all the information that goes on with our district. Stay in touch with us, don't wait till it happens. Be proactive, then reactive, so that we can move this, this district in a great direction, which we're already doing. So again, I just wanna say thank you, I'm here for you. Uh, thank you for the comments, thank you for welcoming me. And I just look forward to continuing to serve District Five, as well as our community here in Clayton. So again, thank you so much, remain safe, and just be faithful that we will get through this.
Thank you all. That concludes tonight's meet and greet virtual meeting, featuring Board of Education member, Dr. Dee Haney of District Five. Thank you all to our, thank you to our special guests and virtual audience for joining tonight's live session. Good night and stay safe.
Thank you.